Twenty-three, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, Commissioners, can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion, is there a second? Thank you. Kristen, we call a roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
And then, is there anyone that we need to take off of the consent agenda this morning? All right, anybody from the public want anything removed from our consent agenda this morning? All right, if not, can I get a motion, please?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. We call the roll, Kristen.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
I'll abstain.
All right, well, do we want to do the vice? Do you want to, we usually will take a little break and we'll do some chair flip in here.
That's fine, or we can continue if you like from right here, it's fine with me today.
Okay, well, then I'm going to let you take over, and we've got to elect our vice chair.
Okay, yes, continuing on, I'm looking for a vice chair position, so at this particular time, are there any nominees?
I'd nominate Jim Schmidt.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion amongst the commission?
Well, last time, we had a no-confidence vote, but other than that, no.
Input from the public? Okay, we have a motion and a second for Jim Schmidt to be the vice chair. Kristen, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
I'll abstain.
All right, well, do we want to do the vice? Do you want to, we usually will take a little break and we'll do some chair flip in here.
That's fine, or we can continue if you like from right here, it's fine with me today.
Okay, well, then I'm going to let you take over, and we've got to elect our vice chair.
Okay, yes, continuing on, I'm looking for a vice chair position, so at this particular time, are there any nominees?
I'd nominate Jim Schmidt.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion amongst the commission?
Well, last time, we had a no-confidence vote, but other than that, no.
Input from the public? Okay, we have a motion and a second for Jim Schmidt to be the vice chair. Kristen, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
I'm staying.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, let's move on. With the approval of the agenda and consent agenda, we can begin with our regular business, beginning with item number one, which is the second reading. Kristen, will you read that, please?
Second reading in public hearing for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning lots one, two, and three, Nine Mile View Edition, Northeast One Quarter, Section Four Township Ninety-nine North, Range Forty-nine West, from the A-1 Agricultural District and the RC Recreation Conservation District, to the RR Rural Residential District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The Planning Commission recommendation for approval failed, zero to five.
Toby, you're here to represent the Planning Commission and so on, so go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Toby Brown, representing County Planning Department. As was just stated, this is an item for a change of zone or rezone. Subject property is approximately three miles to the east of the city of Harrisburg. Subject property, as you can see, is identified as future agricultural area on the comprehensive plan. At this time, the, at the time that the comprehensive plan was developed in 2005, this was the growth area for the city of Harrisburg, as we all are aware. The city of Harrisburg has adopted a comprehensive plan that greatly expands their platting jurisdiction. So, as noted, this property is under the subdivision authority of the city of Harrisburg. Subject property, as was noted, is zoned RC Recreation and A-1 Agricultural. Subject property, these are three parcels that are petitioned this morning, ranging in size from about 2.7 to three acres in size. These properties were part of one parcel, and then in, or last fall, these properties were split into the three that are noted here. The fourth parcel is owned by the applicant, that property does have an existing dwelling on it, that property will not be rezoned, but it will have the ability to construct or replace a single-family dwelling on it. Subject parcels, the three parcels are undeveloped at this time, again, they were part of a larger parcel that was recently platted by the city of Harrisburg in last fall. Applicant did submit a concept plan with the application, did work, again, with the city of Harrisburg to plat the lots into three lots, and did work with the township to secure access, the access would be split between the two lots, so there wouldn't be three individual access points onto the property. So staff did review the application, had some discussions with the applicant, identified that this property was unique, and that it was adjacent to existing rural residential zoning to the north. That property was rezoned in 2014 for the purpose of adding one additional dwelling onto it, in 2017, that property was split. The second dwelling was never built on the property, but I'd also point out, there is no restriction by the county, so when they did approve it for one dwelling, that wasn't the limit, there could be multiple that could have been placed on that property. Did have some discussions with the city of Harrisburg, again, the city of Harrisburg did replat the property prior to the application being considered by the county. Their identification was that they didn't feel it would change the character of the area, that there is a significant amount of residential properties in that area. I want to pull up one thing here. And so I know there's been some discussion about some of the area there, and I'll show So this area is quite dense to the west of the property, but what I would point out is, as you can see, none of those properties were rezoned. The properties to the north, which is what we call Meadow Ridge Edition, those properties were platted prior to August 3, 1995, and so they were eligible for a single-family dwelling without zoning such. And then these properties to the south, what we'll call Meadow Ridge Second Edition, those properties were developed by transfer building eligibility from the surrounding properties. And so that was the major difference in that area. So again, from the aspect, does it change the character of the area, not from the development of the three additional houses, but from changing the zoning to rural residential, it would affect the character of the area? Because again, what's the major difference between rural residential and A-1 agricultural? Agriculture. Agricultural is not a permissive use in the rural residential area. So with that, staff did recommend denial of this application, again, as noted, the Planning Commission did recommend an affirmative motion, denial of this application. With that, we have to answer your questions that you have for staff at this time.
Does the commission have any questions for Toby at this time?
Toby, why did the Planning and Zoning turn it down?
Again, I think that they felt that it wasn't consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. And I would add to that, and I didn't mention that, is that staff did also analyze the city of Harrisburg's comprehensive plan, and did put that into the staff analysis, that the city of Harrisburg's comprehensive plan identifies this as premature development.
So, city of Harrisburg doesn't have a problem with this thing?
I don't know, I wouldn't go that far, but I think staff's available this morning, so, yeah.
Commissioner, I can, Commissioner Schmidt, I can answer that for you. Andrew Petrus did contact me, saying that there was a plat up for consideration this morning, the city of Harrisburg supports it, he would be here to speak to it, but his wife surprised him with a vacation. That's the message I got, so.
Any other questions by the commission?
Toby, if this is out of line with our current comprehensive plan, and we're going through a complete review of the comprehensive plan, this is not meant to put you on the spot of anything, but would our new comprehensive plan allow for this sort of development?
No, so the, not only the comprehensive plan, but our zoning, really, and again, your zoning is based on your comprehensive plan. And the zoning ordinance for Lincoln County restricts residential dwellings to one per quarter-quarter, so this is against your zoning ordinance as well.
But this is a unique situation.
In the past, the board has considered contiguous zoning as a criteria for approval, yes.
You know, you hate to vote against what Planning and Zoning has said, you hate to vote against what we have in place, but yet, on the other hand, if the city doesn't have any objections to this, it's a unique area, it isn't really going to produce a lot of corn and soybeans, I mean, what it's designed for is for development, actually. And aren't these large, pretty large lots?
Yeah, in terms of what we've typically seen, yes, but what, what I would, the point that I would make is that the city of Harrisburg is three miles away, they have platting jurisdiction, but they don't have zoning jurisdiction, and they don't have nuisance jurisdiction, and they don't, and they're not the township to have to work with what's going to be the impacts to these roads, as well as, you're aware, last month, we did have a petition to the property to the north to rezone that one to a planned development. The neighbors in that area, who I've gotten to know real well, object to any type of development that's beyond what's accounted for in the comprehensive plan.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I know the applicant is here at this particular time, if you have something to say, please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Well, Happy New Year, my name is Rob Curtinbach, my current address is 28784 472nd Avenue. Subject property is located in the southwest corner of 273rd Street and 479th Avenue, which is just south of Lake Elvin, looking to rezone three lots from ag to rural residential to allow for one single-family home to go on each lot. Each lot would be approximately three acres. As Toby mentioned, this is not a spot zoning, this land is contiguous to existing rural residential land directly to the north. I do understand the decision of the Planning and Zoning Board, the comprehensive plan they referenced shows this as ag land, so they voted as such. Having a playbook as a guide for decisions like this is important, I'm sure they get a lot of odd requests, and there has to be a baseline, a playbook of sorts, to guide their decisions. I also believe in making the right decision for what the intended use of the land is and what the neighborhood already is. On the screen here, I don't know if that can zoom out enough, but, so that, that shows you kind of what this neighborhood already is, a view of what that quarter of land looks like. As you'll see, the entire 160 acres includes only single-family homes, along with the game fish and parks, archery range, that's it. The land we're discussing is located in the northeast corner of this quarter, what we're asking for fits the neighborhood, it makes sense. In fact, you could make a case that the seven acres of an ag field on the north side doesn't fit the neighborhood. As I'm sure many of you did, I grew up on a farm, in fact, I still go back to help my parents every spring and fall, and I can assure you, it's pretty difficult with the size of today's farm equipment to get anyone to want to bring their equipment over and farm a seven-acre field. It feels out of place. My question is, if not three single-family homes, what other use is this land best used for? What is its highest and best use? There are other ag and farm-related uses that could, excuse me, there are other ag and farm-related uses that could be done on this land, including livestock, but I truly believe its highest and best use is large, single-family homes. It fits the neighborhood, it's consistent. I also believe that if this entire quarter of land was owned by the same person who originally developed Meadow Ridge Edition, that this land would already have been approved for additional home sites, there'd already be homes there. A different family owned this subject property for many, many decades, therefore, it was never included in those plans. I'm not looking to change what the neighborhood already is, this fits the, this fits the neighborhood, it will simply be three more single-family homes, each with about three acres of land, all of which is consistent with the area. Well, zoomed in here, I am actively working with an attorney to create covenants for these four lots, this is an example of what it will look like. These will all be high-end homes, and the covenants will include the following and more. A minimum of 1,800 to 2,000-plus square feet on the main level, no ability to further subdivide the lots, no chouses, no barn dominiums, there will be landscaping and tree requirements, there will also be required dust control of 479th Avenue along those lots, those four lot owners will share in the cost. Single-family homes only, and potentially an outbuilding. Each of these new homes will be a million dollars plus in value based on the requirements we intend to include in the covenants, which is good news for the neighboring home values and additional property tax revenue. My wife and I intend to tear down the old farmhouse on the southernmost parcel, Lot Four, and build our own dream home as part of this. We as much or more than anyone want to ensure the additional homes that are built will be aesthetically pleasing and fit the neighborhood. We will eventually be driving by these homes every day ourselves. As part of the process, I worked with the Dayton Township to get the necessary approval for one additional access point that the two north lots will share, that's Lot One and Two. My original hope was for each lot to have their own access, but after discussion with Jared and the township, it was agreed the two north lots would need to share, and I'm okay with that. The township has approved and signed off on our plans already. This land is on the edge of the subdivision authority boundary with the city of Harrisburg, the city of Harrisburg has expressed their support of this rezone. I also spoke to Andrew on Friday, he originally had planned to try and make this meeting and show his support, but was going to be out of town on a family vacation and couldn't make it. Chad Hevee, the city engineer, is here showing his support on behalf of the city. From the beginning, the city has maintained their support for this rezone. Why? Because it fits the neighborhood, it's consistent with what is already there. Given this land is contiguous with rural residential, it's not spot zoning, it fits the neighborhood, will improve the neighborhood, and will, with the covenants and restrictions that will be required and placed on the property, I would ask that you recommend approval of this rezone request. Thank you for your time and consideration, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does this commission have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Curtinbach, could you just zoom out a little bit? I guess I got a copy here. Here's my question, though, what is just south of proposed lot number four? What is that?
That's an existing home and an outbuilding.
Okay, so that's a home and an outbuilding, then you've got a bunch of homes in that cul-de-sac there?
Yep, you can kind of see the property lines, those are all single-family homes, except, you know, this is the archery, game fish and parks land.
Okay, so that property just south of number four, that's not just a bunch of outbuildings, that's an actual residence?
Nope, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
Mr. Curtinbach, you, your covenants, I took down, just, you wanted trees, no subdivided, dust control on the, on the roadway in front.
Yep.
Homes projected at a million dollars a copy.
And plus.
And possibility of one outbuilding, and, and having any rest.
Yeah, no, no chouses, no barn dominiums, landscape and tree requirements, yeah, I think those are the main things. And I'm open to other stuff, I mean, this is a, you know, again, we're intending to build our own personal home there, we want to, we want to protect the neighborhood as much as anyone.
Do you have a timeline on those remaining three lots?
As far as when they would be built?
Yeah, when you plan to put them up for sale, or whenever?
Probably this spring or summer, somewhere along those lines. And we'd probably build our house in the next two to four years, probably.
Any other questions?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead and hear the proponents, those in favor of the applicant. I guess, okay, please give me your name and address.
Good morning, Chad Hevee, I work with Stockwell Engineers, but I'm here representing the city of Harrisburg Planning and Zoning Department.
What was your last name, Chad?
Ah, Hevee, H-U-W-E.
Okay, yes, please speak into the mic if you can, I know it's hard for us tall guys, but.
So, yeah, I'm here representing the Harrisburg Planning and Zoning Department. We did review this, we, we do feel it's a good fit, or a good closure for that quarter of land, we think it fits the, the area very well. The traffic impacts to that road will be extremely minimal, based on what, how many trips a typical single-family residential home generates. And for those reasons, we, we recommend, or we supported the replat from the four, from the lots into the three new lots, so, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents?
My name is Jesse Deffenbaugh, Deffenbaugh Homes, we work a lot with Rob Curtinbach on projects in the area. One thing that Commissioner Schmidt brought up, that was a very good point, that we're trying to understand what the new comprehensive plan is for Lincoln County, and what a, what a growth areas look like. It's really challenging for everybody, how do we plan for the future, how do we make sure we have infrastructure in place for it, how do we make sure that we're developing land to its best-fit need? To me, it's hard to quantify that on sections and quarters. Everyone knows terrain and topography, and when you have a really beautiful setting like this, it's asking for, that's where I want my dream home. And in the last few years, you guys have recently approved this for development, much similar to what we just did at Lakeview Estates on the west side of Lake Elvin, which is very similar to what Copperhood, Copperwood, Copperwood neighborhood is here. So if you look around this entire lake, it just, it feels like rural residential through and through. I know there's been a lot of discussion what happens with the golf course, and with the parks property just to the north of this. So I mean, this whole area, beautiful setting, beautiful land, what Rob's got proposed, with all the lots being at least two acres in size, just fits with everything there. And I know, being a part of these other commission meetings, when, when we're having our stuff reviewed, I remember sitting in the same room when other applicants were having issues, complained with livestock yards in the front of their house. So I think it just, it's a good fit to have this area just close kind of the, the neighborhood, if you will, on this, this area. So, that's my comment, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other proponents? Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and ask for those opponents.
Good morning, my name is Rebecca Johnson, I live at 47890 Prairie Circle, Harrisburg. I'm just to the south of this land, I want to start by pointing out that the land that was rezoned rural residential to the north of this, that was approved for one house, is now for sale for at least five. So, when this gets rezoned, if this gets rezoned rural residential, what's keeping it four houses? He's got 15. He's a, he's a residential developer, why sell four if he can sell 12 or 15? That's going to make him more money, just like the one that was zoned just to the north for rural residential. That was zoned, or that was approved for the one house, which is now for sale for five. I also have a letter from Jess and John Cook at 47898 Prairie Circle, they're out of the country right now, last name is C-O-O-K-E, and they said, "To whom it may concern, I write this letter with the strongest possible objection to the rezoning request of 273rd and 479th. I have concerns over the consequences of such a rezoning. This rezoning would remove protections to the land, and allow them to place 15 houses without reapplication. We all know that these things, how these things go, and if there's any doubt, look to the north of our neighbors to Sioux Falls today. It's four houses, tomorrow it's 15, next week it will be a strip mall or a four-lane highway. With the current owners may have the best of intentions, what about the future? Plans change, fortunes change, owners change, good intentions frequently have ways of not working out. The people here do not want this, we moved here to live here to be not congested, to not have to worry about what's going on to be built next, to live where the environment is clean, the roads are clear, the nights are quiet, and our children can play. The zoning laws exist to protect the community from things it does not want, from things that will be harmful to the area, from predators who would exploit our community for their benefit. My neighbors have had plans for things like granny flats and barns and storage sheds denied. They have, they were denied to maintain the way of life in our community and to prevent the potential for exploitation. These laws should once again protect us from those who would seek their gain through our misfortune. To our future neighbors, I say welcome to the community, it's a wonderful place to call home, but come to the community as it is, be here with us, and you will understand why we don't want it to change. The zoning laws should stand and ask the committee to, again, protect us from the exploitation of our community and deny this application." I also spoke to Lou and Gina George, who are at 47891 Prairie Circle, they couldn't be here, they're both working today, and asked that this, that, to respect the planning and zoning suggestion to deny. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Toby, could, is there, could you answer some of those questions that this opponent had? Okay, thank you. Any other opponents?
Hi, my name's Leonard Iwinski, I live at 27327 479th Avenue, I'm the property adjoining south of the property in question. What we've mentioned before is, all the people that live south and east of the property moved out there to be in a rural area. If we wanted houses bumper-to-bumper, we would, we would have moved out there, that's one thing. He stated that he want, that that property is consistent with the rest of the properties, that's not true, if he adds homes to it. All the properties south of there and east of it are not bumper-to-bumper, they're on bigger lots. And he said that, that's not going to change the way things are if they add three more houses. Well, if you add three more houses, what about the 30 acres across the street? Are you going to change the ruling on that? And what about the person that gave up his acreage to build our homes so he could have the zoning, or the housing eligibility? It just seems that that's a thing that's, if you allow this, it's going to snowball to other people. What about my neighbors, if they sell their homes, the next guy, he's going to say, well, I want to sell off my property to make more money. We moved out there, I didn't want to live in a house where I sit on the deck and I can hear my neighbors on their deck, and what they're saying. Anyways, that's, my, thank you.
Sir, how long have you been living in that area?
Seven years.
Seven years?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other opponents?
Good morning, Scott Montgomery Fairview, I guess I just have a hard time understanding if we have a comprehensive plan, and it doesn't allow for this, and our new proposed comprehensive plan doesn't allow for this, why are we even talking about this? That's all I got, thanks.
Any other opponents?
Good morning, Sandy Braun, 27395 470th Avenue, Lennox, here representing Lurie and Cheryl Hackrath, which are my parents, at 47891 273rd Street, which is the property that is the west side of this proposed four houses. I really worry that this could be turned into more than just three houses and subdivided. I really worry that this could be turned into more than just three houses and subdivided. There's nothing in writing, nothing to stop it. And so, if that would change, all of a sudden, we'd have 15 houses next to us instead of one. We bought that land out there 21 years ago. Dad bought that as his retirement home. We got pushed out of Sioux Falls from farming for over 100 years. So we moved over there for the peace, the quiet, the, still could see the farm place across the road. The farm field is right in, or right next door. The pheasants, the deer, the wildlife, all are out there. They sit there and watch those all day long. And to take up and add more houses out there, these would be the smallest lots in that area compared to, we've got five acres. And if you look at that, it drops down. I'll tell you what, it was a hard sell to buy, for a farmer to buy five acres that only two and a half of them are able to be used. That's not, that's just not in the books when you're farming 20 years ago. But the view, he's now loves his view and able to enjoy the peace and quiet. But, we talked about traffic issues, especially with the, last month with the venue, which was denied, but that now has housing, so that's still, even with only four houses there and five, six houses across the road, we've got 11, 12 houses that we're looking at coming in right on a corner, but there's issues with visibility and things also. And, again, the comprehensive plan does not go with this. When that land went up for sale this summer, it was one house with 15 acres of land. It's not one house with 40. It's already under what, what it was grandfathered in. And, so, how, you know, how do we stop this from happening all over? I could take and add another house in the front of ours the same way, but will that happen? No, because they won't give up their view. So, anyway, I just ask you to please, please, please deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you. I will take one more before we close here.
Dick Cook, 47894 Prairie Circle, Harrisburg. I'm one of those residential houses in that cul-de-sac. Let's address the Harrisburg Comprehensive Plan for a moment. This property is the extreme outlier edge of the three-mile in the comprehensive plan for Harrisburg. It will be decades before the city of Harrisburg gets anywhere near this property, and in my estimation, really kind of makes them a, not much of a player in this particular project today. The Lincoln County Comprehensive Plan is designed to maintain the agricultural nature of the area, and this changes the agricultural nature. This ground has been farmed for the 11 and a half years, almost 12 years, that I have lived out there, every single year. It's never been in CRP, it's never been in anything else. It has been actively farmed and should continue to be. You all turned down about two and a half months ago, a request for RR zoning, three-quarters of a mile south of this, with a similar type, in fact, a better, larger lot plan than this is requesting. And the Planning Commission had recommended denial on that. You folks went along with that and denied that request just two and a half months ago. The covenants that the applicant referred to have not been completed, filed, and are not on record anywhere, so are subject to very definite change. This property is not around the lake. This is not contiguous to RR residential zoning. This is across a blacktop highway from that and is separate from, and, again, I go along with everyone else who has spoken against this project. If approved for the RR zoning, you're potentially opening this up to nine houses on those three lots. That's what your RR zoning would allow, and I don't believe that the Planning Office, if an application were submitted, would be able to deny a building permit for up to nine houses on those particular lots if the RR zoning is passed. Please deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm closing. Any particular testimony at this time? Toby, would you, okay, go ahead. I guess I'll let the applicant...
Yeah, thank you. Main thing I just want to say is, I'm, I have no intention of subdividing, I promise you. Again, I'm intending to live there. I'll sign whatever you want me to sign today. This is going to be in the covenants. The reason covenants are not filed is because I can't, makes no sense to file them, not knowing what this is going to turn out to be. So I have a copy of some covenants from Lakeview Estates. I was a part of that development on selling it. I'm not a developer, I'm just a real estate agent. I sold those lots, I'm familiar with those covenants. My covenants would be very similar in nature to produce high-end homes. So, again, there will be no further subdividing. I will sign whatever you want for that. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess with that, be willing commissioners to entertain a motion? Yes.
Could we just, you said earlier you had some questions for Toby. Can you give him an opportunity to answer them?
Yes.
And then I have one or two as well.
Okay. Any questions?
Toby, Mr. Cook just now brought up this issue of, basically, I think it was in the form of either an objection or a question. He said, "Could the Planning Department deny a building permit for nine homes if it turns out that, you know, there was a bait and switch here?" Would your department be able to deny the building permit for nine homes under those circumstances or not?
So, so, again, we don't have jurisdiction over the subdivision planning of the property. So if the City of Harrisburg plotted those lots, no. We could not refuse a building permit on those lots if they met our minimum lot requirements.
All right.
Yeah, so potentially, there could be nine houses on those lots.
There could be how many, Toby?
Nine, potentially, yeah.
Okay.
Absent any covenants or absent any, but, again, our office has enforced covenants. So even if there was a covenant on the property, we would still be hand-tied to a building permit if those lots are plotted, so...
Any other questions for Mr. Brown?
Toby, I've got this. I got this map in front of me. And would, could you point out, I was trying to figure out, all I see is houses here. I mean, I'm not trying to, but, I mean, I look to the top of the page here, and I see houses, I see houses, I see houses, I see houses. I mean, I've got some large estates here, and this would be the land in question that was sold and with one housing eligibility on it, and the gentleman wants to put his own home here and add three lots. Am I pretty well summing that up?
Yes. However, I would point out, when you look at this map on the screen, you'll see what the zoning of those properties are. And, again, Meadow Ridge First Edition, which is this area up here, that was plotted prior to August 3rd, 1995, and under those regulations, there was no limit on single-family dwellings in Lincoln County. And so those lots were plotted, developed as such, so they didn't change the zoning. The ones to the south, Meadow Ridge Second Edition, those were developed after 1995, but were moved, eligibility's from these properties over here to these properties to develop. So, again, the, the character of it is not the residential. Yeah, it's three houses, nine houses. Does that change what you see on that map? No. But that zoning to go to, from, from no color to yellow, does have a significant change on that area and the uses that can be allowed within that area. Much of the discussion is, is that there is no limit. As long as you have an acre in an RR area, you can develop what that is. And I think more so, some of the testimony at the planning, there was much more testimony at the Planning Commission level from the neighbors. And I would say their biggest concern is, and, you know, it was alluded to specifically, but this is actually a 160. Their question to the Planning Commission was, is if this is approved and you're basing it on contiguous, what stops that adjoining 160 from being rezoned under the same policies and direction that we would be approving that one? So I think the character of the area, the houses, is like, can impact it? No, but the zoning of it, more than likely, would, because those are separate uses, allowable uses, so...
So Toby, if I understand this correctly, the Planning and Zoning, excuse me, was it the Planning and Zoning Committee or the neighbors who are making this argument, I mean essentially the gateway argument, that if you do this, you open the door to development of the 160? Was that the neighbors or the Planning Commission?
The neighbors.
Okay.
The neighbors, yeah. And there is no answer to that, right? So, I mean, it's potentially, it could be a criteria for the next approval, so...
Okay, any other questions?
In the comment, Mr. Chair, more than question. As everyone knows, I've served on planning and zoning and tried to put a pretty black-and-white interpretation to the rules. There is some ambiguity as to what should happen to this area that is highly concentration, concentrated with housing. But I don't think that our plan currently has a good answer that's equitable to everybody. I do support development, and I would support changing our rules to have and be able to incorporate some changes into these areas. Right now, I think we don't have a basis to make that change, but I think it is important that in the next year, that we work diligently with staff and find out what resources that we need to come up with that answer, for those that would like to change, as well as those that have made it a substantial investment. And those that have bought a housing eligibility, I will attest, have made a significant investment to have that right based by our current requirements. So, without trying to diminish their investment, it's hard for me to change rezone areas that don't have those housing eligibilities, because under our current plan, that's really the only way that we're supposed to be doing it. But that same token, I want to go on the record in saying that we need to do something to change this, because we have these parcels that are not conducive to long-term farming, and somewhere, we're going to have to come up with an answer. Because three years, or three miles out from Harrisburg, although the way Harrisburg's growing may not be 20 years, but it is substantial as to a point in time when they'll get out there, or some other municipality might be out there. But I will defer to the fact that I do understand that this board has, in the past, looked at things differently beyond the black and white, and I will be supporting the majority of the board as it falls out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments by commissioners? With that, I would go ahead and entertain a motion. And, again, we need a motion and the affirmative, correct?
I'll offer the motion, Mr. Chair, to approve the rezon.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the rezon. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Poppins, a second by Landine. Is there any discussion amongst the commission? With that being said, I will allow for public input at this particular time. Any other public input on the, this particular measure?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could. I said this a couple of weeks ago, when we denied the permit for, excuse me, the plan development proposal. There's two different competing visions for southern Lincoln County. Maybe there's even more. But I think there's multiple competing visions here. I think Commissioner Poppins brings up this interesting issue of, what does the development look like for the rest of the Spring Creek area? And I'm disappointed to hear that, and not in a bad way, but this is just an initial thought, is that we haven't grappled with in our comprehensive plan what the area should look like. You know, when I hear something to the extent of where it says, "Well, it's ag, so it just needs to stay ag," well, that means that we're not addressing the real issue, because what that is, is that's a policy statement then stating that we don't want any future growth out there, or that growth should only come in front of us in an ad hoc manner like it does right now, today. The problem is with the ad hoc manner, you know, I've been asking myself during this entire hearing, "How did we get here?" We got here because, you know, back in 1995, somebody wants to, a landowner wants to develop their land, and I think there's 31 different residential, I think I counted here while we were sitting here, there's 31 different residences out there. Those 31 residents, residences got there because of this commission not planning ahead and having a comprehensive plan that planned for what it's going to look like. Essentially, the landowners are driving the process, which I'm not opposed to, but it leads to these problems then, is what we're having. So, we, we need to, as a county, we need to have a better plan, and I don't know what that is right now, for what the rest of the Spring Creek area is going to look like. But the, the notion that just because it's ag land, it needs to stay ag land, well, that means there should be no further growth and development anywhere in Lincoln County then. That doesn't make sense. That's not going to work. That means we should no longer allow annexation, the City of Sioux Falls to annex property or the City of Harrisburg, because it's ag land already, and it's under this theory or logic that ag land needs to stay ag land. That doesn't make sense, because then we would prevent all growth from happening wherever. So, I've got concerns about that. I, I mean, on the other side of things here, and I've said this before about this bifurcated process out here, this is the other problem we have as a commission. It's that, and it's under state law that allows this, is where we control the rezon, but we don't control the subdivision authority plan. And that's a real problem from a planning perspective, because then it leads to issues like what Mr. Cook pointed to, is we don't get to control what the final end product looks like. That's the problem. And I understand, that's a problem in state law, and that's pushed on us, and we don't have any control over that. You've got to get your legislator and your governor to sign a bill into law if you want to change that. So that's another, that's, that's another issue that we have from planning perspective here, and I don't sense any relief from the state anytime soon, because most of the state is contracting in growth and we're expanding in growth. So it's an issue that affects a very small amount of the state, affects very few legislators. We ought to have end-to-end control over this process. So that's another problem as well. The thing is, though, does it change the character of the neighborhood? And I got to say to my friends over there in the neighborhood, if there's only four more homes built out there, it doesn't change the character of the neighborhood. But what I think the applicant needs to be concerned about as well, and what I hear the neighbors saying, is they're worried not just about these four homes, they're worried about the next 400 homes that come out there. And the next 400 homes is not just a neighborhood problem, that's a county commission problem. And... And we as commissioners need to do our job and we need to have a comprehensive plan for what's happening out there so that we can have controlled, orderly, manage growth. Because yes, I would rather see a bunch of executive-level million-dollar homes out there that has a dispersed growth model where we can address this gentleman's concerns. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch his name. But he doesn't want to hear what his neighbors are talking about on their back deck. Well, I support that vision. I mean, that's a good vision. But we have to balance the interest here too with the landowners. Well, landowners have rights. The neighborhood has rights. And we've got to balance those here today. So that's what I'll be trying to do in my final vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Kristin, will you read the motion so that we're? Oh, yes, public comment, yes. Go ahead.
Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. I guess I'm disappointed with the two motions. The two people that motion Commissioner Poppins, seconded by Landine, are both on the Planning and Zoning Board. They brought you their opinion. And the more I see and work and hear about the planning and zoning, I think you have a wonderful planning and zoning. And to just throw that out, I mean, he said he was not going to build for another four or five years. You have time. Why not look at the reasons they stopped this there? I hope that you table this vote. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The motion? Go ahead, Kristin, what was the motion?
To approve.
Yes, the motion was to change it from agricultural district and recreation and conservation district to rural residential. Is that correct, Mr. Poppins?
Correct.
All right, go ahead.
Commissioner Aaron's.
No.
Commissioner Poppins.
No.
Commissioner Landine.
No.
Commissioner Schmidt.
I'm going to vote yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
I'll vote yes, but the motion failed.
Mr. Chair, I want to say this. I hope that this commission, our planning and zoning process, that, excuse me, we kick it into gear and we get a plan for what's going to go on out there. Because growth is coming to this area. And today is not a statement on a no-growth policy. Because growth will happen out there because those landowners who want to develop that area do have rights as well. They have development rights. If we get a comprehensive plan and a plan for that area, this would have been approved today in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number two. Board action to appoint members to boards and committees. Kristin, I guess.
Yeah, however you want to do that.
I'll let you go ahead and do that this particular time. In the past, I know that I think we've grouped them together. I know that the first area, Southeast Council of Government and Executive Board has been Jim Schmidt. And then the Southeast Council of Governments, Alternates and so on with Mike Poppins. Then also the Urbanization, Tiffany, myself and Joel. And also the Council of Governments with Toby and Terry. I guess, are there any changes at this particular time by members of this commission?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I've proudly served on the planning and zoning and in the discussion that we've had today and previous. I think we are on a cusp of needing to, well, we're past the needing to. But I would hope that the planning and zoning have a better clear understanding. I have served in a very black and white factor for the commission, the planning and zoning staff. I encourage this board to support either Commissioner Schmidt or someone else to serve on that planning and zoning liaison position so that they can maybe guide an alternative thought to how we transition this and other aspects of the county. So I would respectfully take my name off the Planning and Zoning Board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I would, we can leave that, Mike, that's fine. I would also take my name off of the Chamber of Commerce and leave Tiffany Landine as a representative there.
Okay? Any other changes?
I don't know the status of the juvenile detention center, which is kind of an interesting issue because I know that many of our county plans to build a new one, but we've never been included in any of the meetings that they have had. I know they've got some pretty strong projections as to the cost. And I don't know, maybe somebody with a more aggressive attitude should take that position.
Okay.
Mike, you want?
I would gladly take that. I went to one meeting several years ago and again, I'm disappointed they haven't communicated. I think that someone does need to follow up with them. I would gladly take that responsibility.
Okay, did we get someone to figure Commissioner Poppins' planning and zoning?
Commissioner Schmidt, will you take it? As you just voted yes on this, I think it is important for you to.
Thank you very much.
And good luck.
Any others, Kristin, that we need to fill? Yeah, we got them?
We need the Sioux Falls area Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors. Commissioner Schmidt took himself off of that one. We need a replacement.
Put Tiffany Landine, Commissioner Landine on there.
Okay, did you get that?
Okay.
Are we all right with all the others?
Chairman Gibbon, I know that you serve solely on four positions. Is there anything, given your chairmanship, you would want to relinquish or feel that you need to relinquish?
No, at this particular time, I'm fine helping in the areas of the Sioux Valley Regional Railroad. And I'm also okay with the weed board and serving on the.
UDC?
Yes, yes.
Then Commissioner Gibbon, I would offer a motion with those changes to approve these assignments.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Poppins, a second by?
Yep, second.
Okay, by Aaron's to make those changes. Any discussion amongst the commission? Any public input? With that being said, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes.
Thank you. Next. Board action to approve a resolution designating and requiring the chair of the Board of County Commissioners to assign department liaison responsibilities to individual commissioners. We've pretty much taken care of that. Or, excuse me, you've done that in the past, right, Mrs. Landine, Commissioner Landine?
This is a new resolution, should be in your share file.
Okay, is that something you took as the chair? Or you're willing to take now?
Well, what we, what we had talked about was having our individual commissioners be assigned to different departments, county departments, to work closely with them on issues that they were having, whether it be hiring staff and other things that might come up. So that was the intent of this resolution.
Okay, do we have a resolution in mind?
It's in our share file.
It's in our share file. Okay. So do we need approval at this particular time?
Comment, Mr. Chair. I think that it's a good, good policy that each commissioner is in contact with the department head and has the ability to relay to them directly the thoughts of the board and conversely take from them concerns that they have back to the board. And I know that with the, with the amount of growth that we have and the responsibilities that the department heads have, I just think it's high time that we do that. And I commend past Chair Landine for putting that idea together because I think it's timely and it will add better communication, better relations overall. So I don't know if you want to go over your appointments, Commissioner?
Well, I'm not the chair anymore, but I did.
Make a suggestion.
I did provide, I did provide a list of what my thoughts, I guess, were for the, for this resolution on assignments, but I don't have that in front of me.
I think, I'm supportive of the idea. I think it's a positive thing, communication especially.
I think that we had, equalization was yours truly. And emergency and, and Commissioner and our GPS, not GPS, but what Peters has was yours, Mr. Gibbon.
Yes.
Airport and planning and zoning was Commissioner Poppins. The VSO and building and grounds and everything else in between was Commissioner Aaron's.
Okay. Is that then a motion that you're making or?
The motion, the motion, I would make the motion to pass this resolution.
Okay.
I will second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion by Landine and a second by Poppins to accept the resolution. Any discussion? Any public input? Okay, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes. Thank you.
Item number four, prison, three public newspapers.
Yep, so in the past, we had Lennox Tea and Sioux Valley as the legals. And then we also published in Beersford and Argus Leader. I propose that we just keep those the same.
Have there been any issues at all this past year that you're aware of with any of the?
We had a few hiccups, it looked like, back in March. Since then, I have not seen any problems with publication since then.
Okay, so basically you're saying that there are three official newspapers with the Sioux Valley News?
Lennox.
Lennox Independent and?
The Tea.
The Tea Champion.
What about the Argus Leader?
We publish in them, but we don't have them designated as a legal.
Does anybody read it anymore? Excuse me. I so moved to accept our legal papers as what has been outlined, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, any public input? Okay, none? Kristin, call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon.
Yes. Thank you. Item number five.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tracy Humphrey, HR Director. Bringing to you today a discussion and action to approve the commissioners' salaries for 2024. As you'll see in the briefing form, I brought two different options. We, during the budget process, you all approved for the commissioners to receive a 5.5% COLA adjustment for 2024 in light of our meeting in December 26th where we approved for other elected officials to receive 8%. I wanted to bring that as an option to you all to discuss what you want to have for your salaries. So I have option one listed in the briefing form and option two.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I want to move for option three, and that's to flatline it.
Option three was what?
Option three is to maintain the current salary.
Maintain the current status, okay, thank you.
That's correct. That's my motion.
Oh, that is your motion?
Yes.
Okay, I guess if that's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second for discussion and I offer.
Okay, Commissioner Poppins, second it?
I offer an amendment to. I offer an amendment to remove our mileage.
I'll second that.
Remove the mileage. Okay. Any other discussion here?
Mr. Chairman, I haven't claimed a mileage check, I think, except for the first week of last year, maybe. And I didn't submit any after that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You know, it's always nice to vote no on salaries. It's politically expedient and everything else. Everybody likes that. However, let's think long-term on this thing. You know, you don't take a vow of poverty to take a position in public service, nor should you take it to enhance your own salary. However, if you want good people to take their time, their talent, and their, to run for an office, whether it's a commission, school board, whatever it may be, there should be some kind of compensation to replace the time that they've devoted. Now, I'm not going to say that, I'm not, I'm in favor of a 5% raise. I think that's fair. Because little do people realize, and maybe it's my own thing, is that the amount of travel that you do to check out roads, the amount of travel that you do to check out planning and zoning, the amount of travel that you do to meetings across, to meet with constituents continually, or the meetings you have all over those. Those all do count up and they come from the bottom line. So while I, the other two commissioners has their opinion, this is mine. I will not be voting for a flat line, but I would vote for a 5% increase.
Thank you. I know for myself, District Two is the largest district geographically for myself. It's approximately 20 miles by 20 miles. The mileage is, is nice. But again, I understand that our other districts aren't nearly as large geographically. I guess at this particular time, we have an amendment to the motion. Before we do so, I think I'm going to go ahead and get public input.
Eric Coleman, Canton, South Dakota. You know, the county business is a business. And if you look into the private sector, the executive team in any business are always very well compensated. And I believe that the amount of salaries that are paid to the commission is basically a very small fraction of the total amount of money that's in the budget that is spent in the county. And I believe that to attract new people to replace yourselves, no offense, but I mean, if, if looking downstream again, like Jim said, that I think that we need to keep the, keep the salaries up there where we're going to be able to attract quality people. As far as mileage, it's a real cost. It's optional whether you turn in the mileage or not, so.
Any other public input? Okay, with that being said, I think we have a motion and we have an amendment. Did the amendment get seconded?
It did, Mr. Chairman. You got to vote on the amendment first.
Amendment first, and that is to maintain the status quo that we've had this last year? No, no, okay.
The mileage.
The mileage.
Get rid of the mileage.
Get rid of the mileage, okay, here we go. The motion is to get rid of the mileage. And there has been a second, so any further discussion? All right, Kristin?
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins.
Yes.
Commissioner Landine.
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt.
No.
Commissioner Gibbon.
No.
Motion failed? Was it three to two?
Three to two.
Three to two, the motion failed.
The amendment has passed. Pardon? The amendment passed.
The amendment passed. Yes. Okay. Let's see.
I'd like clarification on what the motion is.
What was the clarification? What was the clarification of the motion?
Happy to provide, Mr. Chair, the salary for this year, for calendar year 2024, will remain the same as it was last year.
Thank you. All right, again, clarification.
With the mileage.
With the mileage removed.
Obviously, we just passed the mileage motion.
Okay, Kristen, will you repeat the motion for us, if you have it?
In 2024, to keep the salary the same as it was in 2023 for Commissioners.
Yes, ma'am. Along with the mileage provision.
All right, any discussion?
Call the question.
Okay, go ahead, Kristen, call the question.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
No.
Commissioner Landine?
No.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
Motion failed.
Mr. Chair, substitute motion, move for a 5% increase for Commissioners' salary.
We have a motion for 5% increase for Commission. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Landine. Is there any discussion?
I would like, again, we all have a choice, and again, we didn't submit or did submit, it's based on that. I do recognize Commissioner Gibbon does face, or Chairman, excuse me, Gibbon does face a substantial more geographical area by district, but we all do service all of the county and drive to whatever incidents. I still support removing the mileage aspect of it. A 5% can compensate easily for the additional mileage that one does. So I would offer that motion again to amendment, excuse me, to the motion.
Okay. So your amendment is what again, Mr. Poppins?
Again, remove the mileage aspect.
Okay, remove the mileage aspect of it. All right. Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second to the amendment to remove the mileage. Can we? Public input?
I just recently was notified by the Social Security people that I was going to get a 3% increase based on their idea of what the inflation rate is. We all know it's more than that, but that's what the federal government tells us is 3%. So I would ask you to consider 3% the same raise I got. I think you guys are underpaid. I wouldn't do your job for what you get paid, but that's neither here nor there. You guys are here and accepting these provisions, and I would just ask you to consider that the government tells us that's what the inflation rate is and to accept that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we're voting on the amendment, right, Kristen? Will you repeat that, please?
Correct. So the amendment is to remove the mileage, but with a 5% increase.
Okay, very good. Call the roll.
Clark, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We're again just voting on the amendment.
Amendment.
On the amendment, yes.
Only which is removing the mileage.
Thank you. I'll get it yet.
Nope, you're fine.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
No.
Commissioner Gibbon?
No.
The amendment passed. Carrie, he passed. There we go. All right, anything else now? We have to.
Vote on the main.
Call the question on the main one for a 5% increase.
Now, Mr. Chair, I got a comment to Mr. Montgomery's comment about the 3% and the inflation rate. He's absolutely right. Inflation's out of control. I think I heard this morning that the average taxpayer has to pay $11,000 more per family per year just to keep up with the increase in the cost of goods and expenses going on. Public service is a sacrifice. Voting to maintain your salary at a smaller level is not politically expedient. It's fiscally critical and necessary. Taxpayers shouldn't have to pay public servants more money to serve. It is a sacrifice. We don't need more money to do this job. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments by this Commission? All right, we have a motion and a second. Go ahead, Kristen, call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's.
No.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. All right, next item on our agenda. Carrie, or excuse me, Tracy?
So we're asking for Board action to approve a side letter agreement with the Lincoln County Highway Union for a 3% cost of living adjustment, starting with the pay period December 17th of 2023. In your attachments is the side letter prepared by our legal department or reviewed by them to ensure that our, while we're still in negotiations with our highway union, that they get the same COLA that is applied to the rest of the county. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, I'll open it up for public input. Okay, seeing none, call the roll, please, Kristen.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, recommendations from Carbon Dioxide Transit and Storage Advisory Committee. I guess, first of all, I would like to.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt, I will be stepping down, as I have in the past, on any matter relating to this. I do want to thank all those that have served on that, though.
Okay, thank you. All right, first of all, I'd like to thank those that participated in the committee, the Lincoln County Carbon Dioxide Transit and Storage Advisory Committee. And just for review, again, I served on that along with Commissioner Aaron's, along with our planning and zoning people, which was Eric Scott and Marlene Sweeter. Eric also served as vice chair to the committee. We also had committee members Mark Nordse, Anthony Ventura, and David Anderson. We also had two non-voting members in Carla Lems and Adam Werth. So again, I'd like to thank those that served. Also, I'd like to thank those that came from the public, and many of you or some of you are here today. I appreciate the fact that you came and gave input, and were part of it, and that's what we wanted and so on. I think we had a lot of good discussion, particularly our last meeting. We met several times. I wanted to say that we met approximately six times, and those meetings just finished, of course, a week ago when we approved the last minutes of the last meeting that we had. I think more than anything else, I'd like to mention the fact that we try to, in some ways, look at what this would take, how this could take place now and perhaps in the future. We also consider the fact that this is, again, a recommendation that we're making, nothing more than that, and it will, of course, have its way through the process of planning and zoning and this commission again. The committee really basically recommended four options, and those options being, number one, that any ordinance should include the ability for a landowner to waiver setback requirements which protect the landowner's discretion to use his or her land in the economic manner they see fit. And I know that there were some that discussed the fact that maybe a less setback on their own personal property, if that's what they wanted. That was one of the things that they had that option of and so on. Number two, that any ordinance should include a one-mile notification for a conditional use permit hearing, and I know that that is something that we had a lot of discussion on, and I was glad that we had the input that we did. The third option, that the Board should consider the economic impact to livestock with any setback ordinance. And I think that we sometimes forget about that, but at the same time, we as a county have a lot of growth, but we still have, as far as population, but we have a lot of numbers out there in livestock, and that's very important that we remember that our number one industry still is probably agriculture in this county. And that the Board, number four, should consider a requirement that the pipeline company have an insurance policy rated an A or better by AM Best Credit Agency. Again, I think that's important in the event that there is something that does happen that might be not very advantageous to the county and to the landowner and so forth. Again, I think that we had very good discussion. I know that we approved definitions of a number of terms, and that was important as well. And I know that next week, we'll be having, again, follow-up on this as well with some of the more specifics of it. We did talk about, you know, particularly a two-mile setback for municipalities as a recommendation. We also talked about 330 feet from property line to property line is a recommendation as well. And then, like I said, those were some of the other issues that I think were very important. I guess, other than that, Steve, I'm going to, I have a question for you. Any other specifics that I forgot to mention that you probably want to bring up as well at this time? Or Drew, excuse me.
Morning Commissioners, Drew DeGroot from State's Attorney's Office. I guess from specifics, Toby and I are working on drafts based upon those recommendations. We'll add that the recommendations included types of uses. The 330-foot setback recommendation could fall under a permitted special use, which in turn could also turn into a conditional use, so that was one option. The other option was a permissive use, which included a rezoning, and that's more of a hard setback requirement at that 330-foot setback. And then the last option, excuse me, not the last option, the third option would be the conditional use where there'd be no setback, but they would have, any company seeking to install a pipeline within Lincoln County would have to seek a conditional use permit. And then obviously, the last option would be for the Planning Commission and/or this commission to do nothing. However, as Toby Brown has stated from planning and zoning, that right now, it's not considered a use within our comprehensive plan, so that may be problematic if we don't do anything. Happy to answer any other questions, but I think that kind of sums it up a little bit, and we would have, we will have draft ordinances by next week.
Any questions for Drew by this Commission?
Drew, you know, you and I had some correspondence, but do you want to go through the process as to why, where it goes and how it rolls and things like that?
Yeah, so based upon the resolution, the recommendations will be drafted or caused to be drafted by staff, and so Toby Brown and I are working through that. The recommendations will have three options to present to this Board for consideration. At next week's meeting, this Board will then take those recommendations into consideration of which ones this Board would want to assign for Planning Commission to review. And then obviously, if a recommendation is adopted by Planning Commission that comes back before this Board, or will come back before this Board regardless whether they recommend it or not, but ultimately, it's up to this Board when we present the recommendations, if this Board wants to pass those on to the Planning Commission for review.
So this will be, again, something that will be in front of the planning and zoning again, and then also this commission again, right, for public input?
It'll be in front of this commission next week to decide which recommendations will be presented to the Planning Commission for consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Drew? All right, thank you. I guess there are really no action at this particular time to take on this.
Yeah, and I will add, there is no, we cannot take action because it's a recommendation under statute. This Board couldn't take action until the next meeting, so that's why.
Okay.
It's scheduled for the ninth.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Public input, since there was not a motion, I'm not going to ask for public input at this time. It'll be ample time next week. Okay, that being said, do we have any executive session items, Steve?
Opportunity for public comment. Mr. Chair.
Okay, yes, excuse me, public comment for items that aren't on the agenda.
Betty Otten, 46787, 273rd Street, N.T. May I suggest that public comment be made on agenda items before any motion is made as implemented by our former chair? When you make a motion and then ask for public comment, it's like it means nothing. So thank you for that suggestion. And I also want to thank Commissioner Landine for her past years of service as Chair. We have not been an easy bunch to manage, but believe we've all come into a common respect, even though we don't always agree. And so I also want to thank all of you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I concur that. Commissioner Landine, thank you for all the efforts that you made as Chair. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that being said, any other opportunities for public comment? Commissioners. With that being said, any comments from the Commissioners?
I have a few, Mr. Chair. With the legislative session about to begin, the County Association has taken into several items that they want to talk about and have legislation passed. One of them is the alcohol excise tax distribution, in which the counties and cities and state all participate. We're asking that the county portion of the excise tax go from about 25% to 50%. We are looking at veteran service officers being employed by the state, not a county employee. And the reason, the logic behind some of that is that many counties do not have a veteran service officer available, so the state would be able to provide one. We came, and these are ones that we had to vote on, that we affirmed yes or no. So the first two, the County Association did vote yes on. Emergency management personnel being employed by the state, we voted no. We voted on TIF district administration fees, that counties have to take care of all of the administration for TIF districts, and there should be some compensation back to the county for their effort. We talked about county cooperation, collaboration with grant funds that were available, that counties should get together on issues like roads, bridges, and other planning situations where they might collaborate between the two. We talked about cybersecurity grants that were, the state, as you know, did not apply for the federal money that was available under the Certain Act, I don't know which one that was, the, not Reconstruction Act, but anyway, we did not, the governor did not apply. We have PILT, which doesn't make any difference to Lincoln County, but that's payment in lieu of taxes for all of the counties that have large amounts of federal land that they cannot tax. So the federal government puts money aside, and that's something that is very important to several counties. And a court-appointed attorneys, we talked about what aid we could get for indigent defense. And we also talked about mental health. Mental health costs our county some money because we do have the regional thing located in our county, so any support that the legislature can get to reimburse counties. And those are just the ones the counties have. There's many other ones that are being looked at. The county, we were told by legislators that they're going to be, look at the setbacks for pipelines, they will look at other issues, whether or not that comes to being or not. As Mrs. Otten would know, there's an ever-changing world down in Pierre as you get there, because what you think is going to happen may not be there, or it may be gone by the time you get there, something like that. So anyway, that's just what, some of. So anyway, that's just what, some of the things that the counties are looking at for legislation to be acted upon. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments by Commissioners? Okay, executive session, Steve, do we have any?
Yes, subsection one.
Okay, under item one, two, or three?
Subsection one. Just.
I didn't hear what he said.
Subsection one.
Subsection one. Subsection, you want to read that, Kristen?
Subsection one is discussing the qualifications, competence, performance, character, or fitness of any public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee. The term employee does not include any independent contractor. This is on FDCL 1-25-2, subsection one.
Okay, do I have a motion? Go into executive session.
So moved.
My Schmidt, second by Aaron's. All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Kristen, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
I will second.
Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's.
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes, thank you.